First on the agenda, site plan review and public hearing of proposed business expansion. At your single story addition to an existing business at 572 Tenny Mountain Highway. For site plan review, this parcel is split zoned, has two street frontages agricultural. It's an ag zone and ICD. Alright, so we have the applicant on the phone here. I'll just kind of explain the process. We need to first determine if your application is complete, so we'll have you go through your application, any waivers that you need, and give us a brief description. If there's any of your submitted application materials you want the board to see, we can pop those up on the screen for everyone to look at, just let us know. And Jules, I'm ready to go with that unless you want to be the one that pops the stuff up, so just if I can share, I'm happy to do that. So, Rich, you want to tell us about your application?
Sure, thank you. And I apologize, I thought that it was only available to do this by phone, otherwise I'd have been there. But any case, we're looking to put an addition on the current building, the existing building. It's an 1162 square foot, one-story building. The intent is to add three offices plus a, which we don't have right now, we don't have handicap access, nor do we have an office and bathroom available for handicaps, so the plan calls for that to be added to the whole project. I don't know what else can be said, it's a current, we're not going to be renting out space, it's for our current business that's in the building. It's a law practice, we're not adding any more lawyers, we're not adding anybody else. We're not a retail business, we're not a walk-in business, it's only by appointments only. Very rarely do we have more than, I don't know, five cars at the most, at any one given point in time, we have space for 13. Our aim is to make it as pleasing to the eye as possible for people driving by. It will maintain a quote-unquote agricultural appearance. The building is white and old, not exactly a farmhouse, but it's in an agricultural area. The addition will look like a barn, but it will be quite modern, it will be a lot of glass on it. Excuse me, it will be radiant heated, it will be an energy-efficient building. Relatively low, it's a one-story building, and it's still, when it's put up, it will still have about 30 feet, give or take a foot or two between the next-door neighbor and us. That would be where the glass company is located. And there'll be no other change on the other side of the building. I'm perfectly happy to answer any questions, I don't know what else I can tell you. We've been at this for a couple of years. In this planning, that's why we went through the process of getting town water, town sewer. We went ahead and had the state come in and help us develop a state-approved drainage program for the property. We had it paved. And I think that's about it.
Alright, thank you. Any questions from the board on the completeness of this project? Or perhaps a motion to accept it?
I'm sorry, but I can barely hear you, so if you don't mind, would you repeat whatever it is that you just said?
Yeah, so we're trying to get this, the board needs to make a, either ask some questions or make a motion to accept the application as complete before we can move forward to further questions and public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
One question.
Yes, please.
I noticed on the application, there's a request for some waivers, and they seem reasonable. Do we have everything we need?
I'm under the impression Brian can answer that better than I can. I provided everything that was requested of me. Which waiver are we talking about?
That would be for... This was really an internal question to the board and Brian, so thank you.
Those are the questions in the grayed-out section, Steve.
Right.
Okay. This is an existing occupied property, so it is what it is. Pardon me. So we only considered the first section for that, everything is on the plan. I did ask some other questions about lighting and stuff, and was, you know, I got those answers too, and they were on the report as far as sconce lighting on the building. It's, the parking lot is illuminated right now from a pole along Tenny Mountain Highway, you know, a downcast NHCC fixture. And there were, I marked, the NAs on there were ones that I had marked, and I hadn't marked the location type in nature because I didn't, I forgot to do it. So that should be a, an A under there, even though the lights aren't depicted on the plan. I had a long conversation with the applicant about those.
I think my question was more simple, just when someone requests a waiver, as the applicant has, are we okay the way we're at to grant that waiver? I don't see any writing asking for waivers. Do we have to get in a motion that we're granting them? I was just looking for clarity.
Yes, I, because of this, I mean, if you look at the size and location of proposed water main sewer, I mean, a lot of that does not apply here. The drainage is depicted on the plan, and the other one that was blank was, you know, there's no well on the property. This first part is pretty much, you can see that it's written for raw development versus redevelopment. So, you know, I, to me, this, everything is there, he's not, he showed the location of everything, I mean, it was just the one that wasn't marked, and that was because I had had questions when I spoke to the applicant. I had picked up this application on site and forgot to mark that, so that should be a checkmark in the A column, I believe. Or, not in the A, but it's a, it's a waiver because it's not on the plat, though I know where they're going to go.
So I guess they would necessarily call this a redevelopment so much as just an expansion of use?
Yes, exactly.
But yeah, so the other waivers that I'm seeing are, yeah, the soil survey and an estimated construction timetable. I'm okay with all the things that are checked in the W box to box requesting waivers, they seem like they either don't apply, or not necessary for this project. Is that kind of what you were looking to talk about, Steve?
Yep, I just wanted to call attention to them, because I think on most applications, we address the waivers. These sounded reasonable, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody agreed before we accept it.
Thank you, I think that's good too, just to be in the habit of looking through all of this with every application, so we're not missing something that maybe is, is a big deal.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, can I speak again, please?
Yeah, please.
A couple of things that I think would be important. I have been on planning boards and chair of select boards, so I know what you're doing, but this is a project that has no basement, it sits on a heated concrete pad, and the building, once the crew gets here, the building will be completed from the exterior, that includes paint and a roof, within 10 days. So we're not going to be moving ungodly amounts of loads of anything onto the project.
Thank you.
This is a shaker-built building.
Alright, other questions from the board? Is everyone okay with the waivers that are on the application? Alright, so I think now if there's no further discussion, now might be a good time to accept the application as complete. Does anyone want to make a motion to do that?
I move we accept the application as complete.
You have a second for that?
Second.
I think so. Any other discussions? Now I will read the roll. Carl.
Aye.
Bonnie.
Yep.
Madam Chair, can you hear us?
I, um, yes.
Okay, evidently we lost audio because Bonnie had made motions.
Okay.
Could you hear, can you hear her? Can you hear me alright? Put it forward to you. You can hear me, Rebecca?
I can, yep.
Okay. Just because maybe you're sitting far back.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay, so I'm going to read the roll again.
Okay.
Because if I don't do it all at once, I'll get confused. Carl.
Aye.
Bonnie.
Aye.
Mary Ann.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Rebecca, aye.
Rebecca, as a point of order, I'd like to ask, was the motion made by Bonnie anything other than move to a motion to accept?
No.
No. Okay, thank you.
Good point, Phil, thank you.
For clarity, should we go with the motions that were acknowledged by you, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I think so.
So that you seconded, Phil?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't hear the motion either, so I think, I think we all lost the audio.
They rebooted the system, we just found out, and we lost the audio for a short period of time.
Alright, thank you.
I'm just so used to asking people to make a motion, I don't hear anything anyway, so it doesn't sound any different for me. Alright, so any further questions for the applicant before we open it up to a public
I have one, if you want me to go.
Please.
So I found the application very straightforward and the presentation straightforward. I just want to clarify, would there be any changes to landscaping? I know the parking lot's brand new, I know where the building's going, but I didn't see any details of landscaping, and just want clarification, that's it.
In terms of landscaping, I mean, the lawn will stay, other than where the building is, and a small walkway for the, where the handicap access will be. There's no intent to change any of the landscaping on the backside, side that's on, excuse me, Smithbridge Road. And on the front side, our aim is to make it look as if it's always been there, so we're not going to make any changes. There are already trees on there that would, I mean, I can't plant any more trees, there'll be no more signage, so I, from a landscaping part, we'll just try to cut the lawn frequently.
I guess as a follow-up question, because the trees were mentioned, are some of those trees being retained?
There are no trees coming down.
Oh, cool, okay. I'm looking at it from street view, it's a really nice sight, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion from the board? Alright, well, it's 6:46, and I'm going to open up the public hearing. I don't know if there's anyone else on the line here.
I do not see anyone else, Madam Chair, in the participants' list.
Alright, well, it's 6:46, that closes the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Any further discussion, or are we ready to make a decision on this application?
Can I make a motion to accept this application as complete?
No.
I can't?
Nope, that's been done.
Oh my gosh, okay, I'd like to make an, I'd like to approve this.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion on the table is to approve this application. Phil, a second, any further discussion? Alright, the roll. If you're in favor of the motion, say aye. Carl.
Aye.
Bonnie.
Aye.
Mary Ann.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Rebecca, aye. Application has been approved.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich, I'll be talking to you tomorrow.
Hopefully Monday, I'm not here tomorrow.
Not a problem.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other, are there any other reviews that you're going to be doing tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yeah, so there's no other public hearing, we are going to review some minutes and then discuss some updates we're working on for the zoning ordinance.
Okay, do you mind if I get off?
Oh, of course not, you're welcome to stick around, but you certainly don't have to.
Rich, can I make a request?
Yes.
I'd love to see the rally car back, you had a lawn ornament there a couple summers ago, I appreciated seeing it every day.
Well, I could make that possible, but we have some brand-new ones as well. I have lots of them to look at.
Fair enough, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for not making that a condition of approval.
No.
Thank you.
It was simply a request.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Good night.
Good night, Rich, thank you.
So it appears to me that might not have gotten to the rest of the board, that the campground application, the, I can't remember the name, applicant can make it this evening. So we need to, we'll need to continue it to another date certain? Imagining, right?
Yes.
Like a motion there to that?
Yeah, let's, yeah, but are we good to do it in our work session? I'm not here in early, early August.
Madam Chair, would you like the letter read into the record?
Do we need to have the letter read into the record?
Not really, I mean, it's just a request from him for a continuance for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that is sufficient.
Okay, it'll be included in the documentation.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so we need to continue it to, I shouldn't say I'm absolutely not able to make it to the meeting on the 6th, but I, likely that I won't be able to make it there because I'll be coming from another meeting, so are we okay to try and do it during our work session?
Sure.
Sure, if I can be there either.
I should be available, I can do that.
Okay.
I just don't know if we'll have a quorum.
Yep, we need three, so.
And in fairness to the applicant, if he couldn't be here tonight, I wonder if we just ask him to come August 20th?
That might be the best idea. We've been kind of overdoing our work sessions with regular business, and, you know, putting the work session business off. It'd be nice to get on track, but it's entirely up to you folks.
I just, I'm looking at the clicking, the clicking, the ticking clock, and so we have, what's the, do we know, I can pull out the bylaws, but I just can't remember how much time we have from when we've accepted an application as complete?
I can speak to that, Madam Chair.
Okay, yeah, please.
It's 30 days prior to the meet, or, I'm sorry, short period of time prior to the meeting, 21 days I think it is, and then it's 65 days from when the application was accepted, unless by mutual agreement, it's continued.
Okay.
So our timeline is basically out the window, but it doesn't matter because it's been mutual on both sides.
Okay, alright, so let's continue this to the, what's the date we said, the 20th?
20th.
Okay. Alright, so can someone make a motion to continue the application or hearing until date certain of August 20th?
I will move that based on the request to continue the hearing, that we schedule our, the next hearing on this topic at our next public hearing on August 20th.
Okay, any discussion? Alright, I am going to read the roll, please signify your support of this by saying aye. Carl.
Aye.
Bonnie.
Aye.
Mary Ann.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Phil, you're on mute.
I thought I unmuted, aye.
And Rebecca, aye. Okay, so we'll continue that to August. Next up, we have two sets of minutes to review, one from June 18th and the other from July 2nd. Let's do the June 18th minutes first. Any comments, edits on the minutes from June 18th?
I have one. It's just a typo, it's on the last page, and it starts with where it says a discussion, then second sentence from the bottom, and it starts with size, and it says sand, but I'm sure it's supposed to be size and setbacks for those three? And that's the one I...
Sizes and setbacks, I think size was supposed to have been...
Oh, okay, sizes, alright, that's where the S is, okay.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone who approves the minutes as amended, make a motion for that?
I would make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
Alright, I'm going to read the roll. Carl.
Aye.
Bonnie.
Aye.
Mary Ann.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Rebecca, aye. See, the minutes from July 2nd. Any edits, comments on the minutes from that site walk we did?
I have a comment on page one, second paragraph from the bottom, it was about the beach, and in the first sentence, it says, Carter stated that the beach, which appears in the site plan, must be constructed. And then it goes on to talk about the beach ramp, so a lot of different conversations, so I probably didn't hear this particular conversation, but the beach is definitely there, so I'm wondering if it's something else, access to the beach or something?
I thought it had more to do with the ramp spoke of.
That would make sense to me, but I wasn't sure, I just wanted to flag.
I guess I had talked to him about that, and you were in the vicinity, but I asked him about the beach, and that's, so there isn't really much of a beach there, maybe there's a, he's, that's what he said, that's what I understood, but we can certainly just talk about the construction.
Yeah, because if it is constructing a beach, I think we may have a much bigger issue on our hands.
Right, right, we'll need to get some clarity in that for sure, if, because I did, I feel like my ears perked up when I heard something like that, and then the conversation proceeded to talking about the cement log. So I remember hearing that, but I heard it just, and then I thought it was talking about the ramp, but I didn't hear the initial part of the conversation, so I think maybe we leave the minutes as is and make a point to get some clarity on that from the applicant.
Yeah.
That's fair, and I guess the other piece then probably is factual as well, trees along the, the next sentence, trees along the edge of the river will also be removed, and we can take that up on August 20th. So I have comments.
That conversation strayed a little bit, as I recall, Steve, and the wood line that we saw when we walked it was actually greater than the setback for the shoreline protection, so he was going to move it back to the legal limit, is what he told me, so I think, pardon me, he, he wasn't talking about stripping the trees, he was just talking about moving that existing wood line back, but...
So that, that does seem different than moving trees on the edge of the river.
Yes, yes, but there, I mean, it's at the edge of the river, kind of, I mean, it's within 100 feet, so you're right, there is a lot of outstanding questions concerning many of the things that he brought up, you know, I think we're all very well aware of that, but that would be something, I did ask him for the, for the notes on the, on the new plan, that he would show where the existing tree line was, as well as the proposed tree line. But the proposed tree line that he showed us before was complete, there weren't any gaps in it, or it appeared that it was just the natural tree line, but shrunk down to the allowable cutting limit. And he made then, according to the Protection Act, you know, with the tree value and things like that, but I, he never really expressed that he was going to clear-cut the beach or the riverside.
And I definitely don't want to get into reviewing the site plan, I just wanted to flag those two things, so if they weren't accurate, they could be fixed, but if, if they are accurate or uncertain, I would leave mezzes.
Yeah, so let's make sure that we're asking about, about those in our next, in our next hearing. I'm just trying to figure out how I'm going to remember to do that. Maybe a few of us can try and remember, because it's been a trouble with my mind.
If we pull up the minutes from the site walk, that'll help.
I'll ask Carol to include that in the minutes, because, you know, that, it does need clarity, and that will appear in the minutes for tonight's meeting as well.
Alright, construction and the tree removal. Alright, any other questions or comments on the minute? Would anyone like to move, make a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll second.
Yeah, as they are.
Alright, once there's any discussion, I will read the roll. Carl.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm recording it.
Mary Ann.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Phil.
I'm staying.
And Rebecca, aye. Alrighty. Let's talk about the district sheet for zoning. So we had, I speculated them again yesterday with the dimensional standards, I wasn't sure that anyone had speculated them like that. We had talked at our last meeting about going over the district sheet, specifically looking at the permitted use, a little bit of the, we had some, like, conditional use permit, is that what we were calling them? For approval on some of these, and, and also just we set some draft dimensional standards as the subcommittee kind of looked at what we thought would be appropriate, so it would be helpful to be looking at this while we're talking about it.
Could be, I haven't pulled up on my own screen.
Are you able to share?
Do you want me to share the zoning map now?
If you want, I just want to make sure you can do it.
So Julie, I thought I should pull up the zoning map? Do you want me to do that now, Rebecca, or do you want to?
Sure, yeah, that makes... Sure, yeah, that makes fun.
Okay. Too many windows open.
Yeah, I've got it too, but
I got it. Sorry.
There you go. There you go. There's a little plus.
You want me to zoom in more?
Probably a little bit.
I think it's actually pretty good, especially considering we're talking about the
Oops.
Because when we zoom in too much, we get, it gets too muddled with the lines.
You can kill that layer, Steve.
Yeah, you can take
The, the property line layer.
All right, don't let me stop you from talking about the districts. I know this is captivating and all, but.
Yeah, so did everyone have a, I should ask, did everyone have a chance to review and look into the zoning district sheet? Yeah, so what questions do we need to answer for tonight? I know we wanted names and what review the dimensional standards, but any suggestions on where, where we want to start?
So I do have one question, which is, it may be a clarification, but the, the new zones that are proposed seem to make sense in replacing the agricultural, the industrial, commercial and the highway commercial, but are, are we proposing to eliminate the single-family residential, multifamily residential?
No.
Okay, so, so part of our discussion is, is, I, I think it's I wasn't exactly, I, my, my assumption is that we weren't, but all right, so the, the updates are going to leave several of the zones in place and just rezone portions of town.
That's correct. Yeah, we didn't want to get in, it was getting overwhelming trying to look at all the zones. So leaving village, commercial, multifamily, the civic and institutional and single-family residential as is for now, because there were fewer issues. That was the thought. And focus on the balance of town where there's more of an opportunity to clarify things.
I'm comfortable with it, with that being clarified.
The idea being that the master plan identified areas where we would be we, we should be encouraging development and discouraging it in other areas. And this is really just us aligning our zoning ordinance with what we determined is important in the, in the master plan. And and I use this example a lot, but just keep in mind market basket is in the agricultural zone right now, so. So really, this is an opportunity to look at what our what we, what we want to see for the town and how does our zoning how can our zoning be a structure that allows us to get there, so.
Now, when, when you look at something like this, Steve, do you take into account existing features as well? So in like the chair said, market baskets is in the A zone. So I mean, just to unify everything, would it make more sense to extend that ICD line to the back portion of the, the lot? Or, you know, are we just talking about you know, because at the same time, it, it would look like it, it really wants to extend further west, at least to the circle?
And it's up to this planning board to decide. One of the things we haven't been able to get to yet that we hope to once these three sub-districts get kind of vetted by this group is to create kind of a draft map that will show, that will show the distribution of the three districts, because the map that I have pulled up now is the old zoning map.
Correct.
That ICD can change, like you're saying, Brian. Cultural district will get broken up because along 3A and where the highway commercial is and along 3 South, we'd have the gateway district. So at some point, we have to have that visual so we can show people what it is we're talking about. And then that addresses, Phil asked, you know, what's happening to the other districts where people are living and and own businesses and they'll know that they're staying as is for now.
Right, it, it'll follow when it's appropriate. I, I totally understand that.
Now, as far as the ICD getting stretched to Route 3A, that, when we get to that point, we should have a conversation. When the students worked on this with me and brought this to everybody here, just some of the initial drafting. One of the things we found is there's way more space in the existing ICD. And if you extend that zone, if the Tenny Mountain mixed use zone just becomes bigger, you're going to continue to kind of have scattered, uncoordinated development time to come. If we keep it more consolidated and give people more density as we're proposing.
Right.
Hopefully you'll see more coordinated development.
Great. Other thoughts? Questions about this?
Being that I, I didn't put the majority work in on the subcommittee, I, I would like to thank Steve and Rebecca for the taking the lead on this, but I, I, I'm happy with where we are, but you know, as a member of the subcommittee, I don't feel like I should be leading the comments on this.
Yeah, I feel like the subcommittee got to a place where we like where it is right now, but for us to, if we're going to move forward with this and try and update our zoning ordinance. I mean, it's a, it's a pretty big task for us to do. And if we can't get it past this group here tonight, then we're not going to get it past the rest of the town. So we need to pick this apart and make sure we're creating something that's better than what we have and is going to serve the town into the future, so. So your feedback's really important, but there's questions. Confusion, things that you don't like, like it's really important to bring up.
Yeah, you will not hurt our feelings at all. I would rather hear it from all of you. Don't string us along. You don't have to know the answer either. I think you could just say, why is, why are you suggesting this?
Well, essentially, you're, you're recommending that we call it what it is. Versus, you know, the A or ICD, I mean, you know, because we're really looking more towards like you were saying in the statement of purpose with the mixed use. We have made a few inroads in that. But, you know, I think that, that having it as a mission statement will promote that even more.
Yeah, and that's one, I did get a comment from Mary Ann and I've noted it and we can add it into the next version, but Mary Ann, I think your comment was more about in the statement of purpose for Tenny Mountain Highway, making sure we call out the economic development potential that the town sees.
Right. Yeah.
We can definitely add that in, that seems appropriate.
Yeah.
I like that.
Can I just ask what, so the next steps would be to remap this so we can look at it again? That's my understanding. And then after that, you want to vote on it? Vote on the changes, is that the plan?
Yeah, I don't want to dominate the conversation, but I think there's also Julia, like an outreach, we need to come up with like an outreach plan, like how do we start to share this more broadly? And bring in folks who will ask hard questions.
So you're going to put the voting, you want to do the outreach and then the voting? Okay, just, just so I can get an idea.
We need to, I think before we start the outreach, the board needs to maybe make a vote or just come to a consensus, if this is what we want to put forward to the town.
Brian, do you recall offhand how soon before town meeting we can vote to move forward with this? There's a limit, we can't do it.
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty bizarre formula based on dates from the town meeting and all that other stuff. I can have that information for you at the next meeting. Generally, it's, you know, in broad strokes, I think we have to have it like ready for publication in November.
Okay.
In November, somewhere around, it seems to be a little sooner than I thought, but I'll make sure that I have those dates as a handout for the board next time. It occurs to me now that I have the microphone. We're going to have to go pretty deep on, on this because the very last sentence is really there's a lot of meat in that, you know, the architectural design and signage and landscaping part. You know, it is that's, that's a pretty heavy lift compared to just describing the, the zonal boundaries, you know? And I'm not saying not to do it, but you know, we're going to have to really go go for it there.
It's been a while since I read up on this, but if I recall correctly, the process of changing our zoning ordinance is a little hairy in that if we vote to approve this change. We'll have to have a hearing, once, once the board votes to approve, it effectively, it, it, it goes into effect until the town votes. So we have to keep in mind that if, if someone comes to us with a proposal in the period of time between when we approve this and town meeting when it's voted on, we, I believe we're under the obligation to
It's weird.
Really?
Use this.
Yeah, once it's out at the public hearing level, Phil, not at the board level. The board is only voting to offer it to the town. They don't really have the power for it. Because
Okay.
It, it's all done at town meeting. I mean, that, that's very clear on that end. I can get that clarified for you.
Yeah, I think
There's protections against these actions.
There is a funny, there is a funny thing about
You're correct, a building permit can be held in abeyance because of a zoning change and all that stuff, but it's it's only after, you know, it's, it's proposed, so it's, it's shortly before the, the vote period. It's not from, I mean, from what you were saying, if that was true, if you voted on this tonight that, you know, had some kind of change, no matter how small in it, that would start that clock and it's way too soon for something like that to, to have any effect. And besides, it's not coming out of the board without approval by the population.
Right. My, my point in bringing it up is that I, I don't feel like we need to rush into this in, in order to not create those conflicts.
No, but I think we're good on the conflict still like December to March, like Brian was saying, and it really is at the risk of the applicant and choose to ignore it, but if it is adopted in March, they have to start over. So usually people will hold off or they'll just follow the new zoning.
Yeah. And, and we did have an instance of this when we extended the highway commercial to Merrill Street. Part of that was in reaction to a proposal of about 30 units on Main Street next to Kirk's gas station. So we, we started, we started the rezoning process during the timely period, it did freeze out that application. Fortunately, it was drawn shortly thereafter.
My concern on moving forward, so it sounds like we do the draft map, we do the vote that both Juliette and Rebecca have mentioned, like just a board vote to continue to move forward with this proposal. And then we have to roll out outreach and that's my concern is providing enough time and enough different types of outreach. And I think outreach is going to look really different than I would have thought just four months ago. Where I thought we'd gather in a room and people could kind of shout at us and point at the map and so we need to be thinking, I think, in the next few weeks about ideas you have about how outreach could work for this, how can we get information out? Do some televised stuff like we've talked about, but provide meaningful ways for people to ask questions and be heard and share their thoughts. Otherwise, it won't get voted on in a positive way.
We can certainly draw up, help you drop a plan for outreach.
Awesome.
Television and informational hearing sort of thing, right, Brian?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, UNH cooperative extension has two webinars, one, I meant to go today, here yesterday, but I missed it. But it's about engaging people during the current time, so that might be something for, at least, well, I meant to go to it, so. Maybe I'll watch the video, but that might be a good way to get some ideas on how to be engaging with people, so, you know, it's pretty broad in its scope, not just any type of business or anything like that, it seemed like it was pretty general, so. Might be a good place to get some ideas. So, but yeah, I think it has to be a broad stroke and it has to, and maybe you have to provide multiple ways for people to provide feedback. Whether we have some sort of survey, some sort of, something that allows people to make comments in different ways and then allow us to to answer those questions on, in a forum where people can see it, so. Yeah, I actually think maybe this is forcing us to be creative in a way we wouldn't have done otherwise and, and maybe we'll, maybe we can ultimately be marketable with it, because we have to we have to try a little harder than meetings and stuff like that, so.
And we might want to do some targeted outreach to, you know, past planning board members, landowners who will have strong opinions. And, you know, get their feedback, hear their questions.
Yep.
And then they may help us think about how to reach other people. As far as the draft map, Rebecca, I feel like this ends up falling on your shoulders because you're the only one with the skills and I know it's kind of a big ask.
Yeah, I can do it, I just, I'm swamped for probably another two weeks. I can try, but yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the, yeah, I know I keep saying this, but yeah, I need a little more time just to sit in front of the computer and figure it out. I'll try and carve out some time, but yeah, once I hit August 6th, my schedule opens up a little bit, so.
Okay. I would say it doesn't have to be the most beautiful map in the world, just get the concept across.
Yeah, if I can just upload these quickly, it might not take very long. It might take a long time, so. Depending on what, what it looks like when I open it up, so.
Let us know if you need some help with that.
Yeah, I mean, unless anyone else has some GIS skills, I think I'm, I might be the only one here who can do something like that, so. All right. Other questions we wanted answered from the board, is everyone good with the dimensional standards? Do we need to talk a little further about what we were thinking when we put the dimensional standards on there? Minimum lot size, I mean, that represents kind of a significant change.
Yeah, if I recall, we were, we threw the five acre OSRD number out there hoping to spur a discussion with the, with the board here, so. I, I'd love to hear feedback. Do, do people think five, five acres is, is too big there? Too small?
It might be not the size so much as the expense. If someone doesn't have enough money to purchase a five acre lot and they want, you know, that can make the difference between somebody being a homeowner or not.
So keep in mind that, that this is not once, once lots are created, if, if they're existing lots, they can be bought and sold and built on regardless of the size, this will only affect the creation of new lots. So if someone has a 15 acre lot and we go with a five acre minimum lot size, they can get three. If we go with a three acre minimum lot size, they can do five. So it's, it really doesn't affect existing lots all that much, it just creates, it affects future development.
So I think what you're saying, Phil, is if there's a one acre lot out there now in what will be the SRD, someone can buy that at a lower cost, like you're saying, Bonnie. Create a new one acre lot. And we spent a lot of time talking about that, it's a concern we share, kind of not creating a big part of the town that is protective for an array of people of different incomes, that's not what we want to do. And so the note here about five acres and the lot size averaging. In an ideal world, if we created the five acre minimum, we would then create a subdivision tool that would allow somebody to get an average of five acres. So it fills example of the 15 acre piece. They could get three lots, but one might be 10 acres, one might be one acre, one might be four acres. They'd average out to five. They'd average out to five. So that I might want a ten acre piece and keep it in current use for some. Just to say, but I might want to sell a one acre lot or give a one acre lot to a child of mine. And I'm just not certain that we'll get around to making those subdivision tools fast enough. So that's my one concern about the five acres. I'm afraid it'll sit there for years and the board will change and we'll have a scenario that Bonnie's talking about. So I'm not, I'm not tied to it. We did flag it in yellow as Phil said to kind of.
Yeah.
Get everyone's blood boiling, so they'll talk about it.
What happens to a one acre, a one acre lot and they want to subdivide that? They can't?
You can't do it now.
No.
Even today, you couldn't do that, Maria. The, the minimum lot size in all zones right now is one acre.
Okay.
And so our thought with keeping, like sticking with the one acre for the mixed use area, but then doing something a little bit less dense in the gateway. Just because so much of the gateway is being carved out of the agricultural district. But it doesn't mean that the OSRD district, which will be more residential focused. Couldn't also be two acre or three acre or whatever the board feels is appropriate. And we could even put a scale in here for now and start having conversations and see what the public says. We don't have to pick.
There be any kind of a tool for, you know, or large parcels with less than the two hundred foot frontage that could be developed. You know, with your lot averaging, like you're talking about, you know what I'm saying? Just because the entrance to this pork chop is narrow. Doesn't mean that the development is dense. Once you get back into where the, the meat is, you know what I'm saying? The, uh, that always seemed to be a stopper to me that, that we didn't really recognize the value of backlots as much as, as, you know, they could be. And, and if we're going for larger lot sizes there, it might be that, you know, the only way to make it economical would be to have a slightly reduced road frontage. But the same lot averaging further in the back. You know, so say you had extensive frontage, you know, a large piece of property. You could carve off five acre lots along, you know, with two hundred foot frontage. You know, and five acres, you know, if they, they don't go back that far as the parent parcel. So you, you'd end up, you know, somewhere in the middle or wherever with a frontage that was, you know, less than the required. But actually opened up to greater area in the back. And, you know, I, I know that it doesn't happen often in planned subdivisions, just because, you know, that, that's the way it works, but our rules don't seem to really. You know, they're a little bit silent on that. I would like to see a little bit more about, you know, alternatives to, you know, common development in, in the rural residential. You know, where, you know, you could it would essentially be a private road into a subdivision. But it wouldn't look like a subdivision because all of the lots are five acres.
I think that this is one of those situations where there are probably a couple of different ways to deal with those backlot opportunities that you're talking about. Cause I can see what you're saying, Brian. It's hard when we're updating the zoning.
No, no, I totally get it.
And we really should be updating the subdivision and site plan, which we also have budget. If we could up subdivision regs, like you're saying, and do like a flexible lot sizing requirement and address backlots.
And, and the reason I'm bringing this up now is that there's this big push for affordable housing. So we don't want to paint ourselves further into the corner that we already have in terms of that.
Right. Now, whatever that lot size ends up being in the OSRD, you'll still be able to have a primary residence and an accessory dwelling in it. I have too many screens open. I do apologize. I'm just checking our uses. So we simplified the uses. So in the OSRD, residential is permitted. We don't call out multifamily any different. So you could still have a multifamily unit in the open space residential as it stands today in this draft.
Do you foresee increasing the minimum lot sizes for multi-unit dwellings? Or do you think that the five acre for a, a single family residence or a triplex is roughly the same?
I think we're gonna have to spell it out.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you're those are some of those details or details we haven't sorted out yet that we should. So I'm making a note of that.
Okay.
And I, I think I know where you're going with it as far as, you know, preserving open space, but maybe, uh, spelling out the goal. The long-term goal will help communicate a change like this.
Okay.
Because it's same, seems like it's intuitive, but it might not be.
I really like the conditional use permits rather than variances or special exceptions.
I'm glad. I want to address Juliette's comment. Do you think that we should change or expand the statement of purpose to hit on that spelling out the long-term goal?
To, to change it?
Yeah. Do you think we should say more to try to tell the story of the long-term goal for that district?
Well, I guess I wanted to hear it in your own words, sort of how it would come across. And, and, and if you're all unanimous in it, but I just kind of wanted to hear how it sounds verbally. Uh, how we, how you would phrase it, just talking to the public.
I'll start, but I would encourage others to jump in and either correct me or add. I think what we found in the master plan is the agricultural district as it exists today has some of the most constrained land from a development perspective and some of the best natural resources in Plymouth and doesn't have access to the same services of water and sewer and good road access that other areas do. And yet it allows just about every kind of development possible. And so we're looking to correct that and actually have the standard as Brian said earlier in the meeting. Reflect what the pattern of development is, which is lower density, primarily residential, um, access to open space. That's how. No, I'm done.
The master plan encourages, you know, says that we, we want to be protecting the rural lifestyle that we've got and we're unique in Plymouth. I don't know if we're unique, but I like Plymouth and it seems like a lot of other people like Plymouth because we have this balance of dense economic development. And then, but we also have this rural lifestyle as well. So and that came out in the master plan, the work that went into the master plan, that trying to balance between promoting economic development, but also protecting that open space as well. So we can maintain the existence of having, it's almost like the best of both worlds, really. I think just leaning on the master plan that was built with public input that tells us that that's what, that's what people want to see. So.
Thanks. Yeah, that's kind of what I was looking for, just in your own words, your feelings behind it, you know?
I think it's those kinds of questions, Juliette, that are helpful because if we can't articulate it or point to then we're, we're still missing a part of the puzzle.
Yeah, people are gonna look to you to, you know, express what you're really, what your vision is. They may, and then they may read into it further, I'm sure.
Yeah, my concern is that it's gonna be looked on as a restriction in development, but really it's a making allowances for the right, for good development in the right places and making sure those areas that might not be suitable for large-scale development. That those areas are, are protected a little bit from that, but we're encouraging development in the development and economic development in particular in inappropriate places.
And I think if we, one of the elements of this vision that we should try to get across for this OSRD zone is right now, if you develop in the agricultural zone, you don't have a lot of protection that some use that you don't like isn't going to go in next to you. I think we have a good history of that not happening. But there's a little bit of a fear of what may end up next to me. So we may actually see people more comfortable with investing in residential units in the OSRD if they can understand what's going to be there and what the conditional use process of how high a standard someone would have to meet to have lodging or a professional office or something there.
Certainly the, the road system and the pattern of development so far indicates, you know, to anybody who is looking to establish a commercial enterprise that that's not the place to be. I mean, if you need eyes on your product, you're not going to be up, you know, at Grace's area of the woods because, you know, unless it was a boutique type home occupation, you know? But, you know, certainly not, nothing industrial, I think. And, and there would be really no call nor enough money to pave the roads to a standard to get heavy traffic up there.
There, there are places along Fairgrounds Road, for example, that would be candidates for development, you know, industrial or, or commercial. And, and I do think that it's important to recognize that, you know, if we want to keep those areas residential, it's, it's important to identify that.
But we also have to take advantage of the state road system of which Fairgrounds is one. So. You know, it, once we've maxed out on Tenny Mountain Highway. You know, I, I, I don't know what you would see up there other than, you know, the small businesses that we have located up there already.
Right, no.
I think this brings, that brings up an interesting point because, you know, Fairgrounds Road. Currently agriculture. Not, I mean, I don't think a gateway is appropriate for it. I definitely don't think that Tenny Mountain mixed use is appropriate. But there's certainly, but is the open space rural development, is that, is that the right thing for that area? I think it was identified in the master plan as an area for potential economic development.
I would say this is where the conditional use permit comes in. And Brian mentioned it, but I jumped back to Juliette's point. So I didn't get a chance to address that. But I think when we write the conditional use permit standards, there are criteria that the applicant has to be able to satisfy. And there may be a way to do that on Fairgrounds where you already have some non-residential development nearby. That would be hard to do on New Hebron Road or Old Hebron Road.
Absolutely.
So I think the standard might be easier to meet there, which would lead us to make it easier to approve. Um, and direct those kinds of uses that you're talking about, Phil, that might seek that out. But it doesn't just allow a blanket, yes, you can go in it. It's saying, okay, how are you going to reduce noise and these other impacts to someone like Bonnie who may live nearby to make sure that we're not totally changing the character of that area overnight? Cause that's, that is a tough one. That's a good one to play around with.
There are almost always exceptions to any good, good idea, but you know, that, that area certainly seems like could go either way with single-family residential or potentials for some commercial there.
Thinking logistics here. So say we get this all lined up, we do all our outreach, we get approved in, at the town meeting. The conditional use permit, does it fit in the zoning ordinance or those fit within the site plan?
We're more on your side of the ledger, Madam Chair.
So how much are we gonna have to scramble to get all those conditional use permits ready to go? I mean, is that something that's happening simultaneously if we're doing this outreach? So that if we've got a new zoning ordinance, we need to have all this other infrastructure to support it.
Right.
Should probably prepare, be prepared to have those drafts available and, and if those are subdivision, uh, site plan reg, subdivision and site plan regulations, we can adopt them once the zone.
With a public hearing, I think. So.
I would suggest that as this is starting to solidify, it appears and the map comes with it. And we are starting to roll out that outreach. As you guys were both just saying. I'm happy to put some time, maybe our subcommittee could turn into a conditional use permit subcommittee. But I think we have to start drafting it and asking this board for feedback on the conditions. I have a feeling a lot of people won't want to vote on this until they know what the condition is. What's required. And I totally, I can understand that. So we should be able to start to show at least a draft so that we have something that just needs to be slightly refined, Rebecca, if this gets adopted.
Great.
I just made a note of it.
All right. Yeah, I just don't want to have a, do like, yeah, we got this new zoning ordinance, but oh, we have all this stuff that we need to. We can't actually implement it because now we've got, yeah, then we're in trouble. So.
That's why you're the chair.
Yay. All right. So next steps are obviously me getting to the map. And I think we just need to redraw some of these map lines. So I could, yeah, I need about two weeks for that.
Should we try to do this at the August twentieth meeting, like review the map? Take any additional questions on this and get a vote to proceed at August twentieth?
That sounds good. And if we need, if there's nothing else for us to do in the meantime, not to skip right over to a potential night off, but if there's nothing else for us to do in early August, you know, we could consider just postponing or not having a work session, get one, one summer Thursday off.
I think.
Unacceptable.
Maybe with the concession that everybody think about creative ways to do the outreach, like how do we tell people the story? And, and really, most importantly, give them a chance to ask questions and tell us if we're off the mark.
All right. So how about everyone comes to the August twentieth meeting with several different ideas for outreach? Might be some overlapping ideas, but, um. Does that work?
Yeah.
Um, Brian, is there anything that you can see coming down for a public, public hearing in August? I mean, I know we have one thing.
I think that we might have a minor subdivision or lot line adjustment. I know that, uh, Kevin called me like two days after the deadline. So, but I haven't heard anything from him yet. So, you know, he's got another eight days to get that in front of me. If it was, it was, it was pretty simple. You know, it was just a, you know, Kevin, he, he does. Everybody's work for them. That's the only thing I really see. Uh, I do have some correspondence that I wanted to get to towards the end here, but it does feed back into what we've just been talking about as far as the, uh, OSRD. Let me know if it's appropriate, if you want me to hang off on this, you know, until we get through the business, Madam Chair. It's not, it's not, it's, it's a potential, but it probably wouldn't come in until September.
Okay. Maybe we'll just wrap this up with the. So we'll, everyone's good if we don't have a meeting next, very work session. If two of us can't make it. Or most likely can't make it.
I won't make it.
Yeah. I would love to not roll out of a board meeting and write into this. That would be that would be better for me. Okay. So August sixth, we won't have a meeting. We'll re-convene August twentieth. Everyone will have several ideas for outreach. And in the meantime, if I see any other ideas, I'll send around the UNH, the Cooperative Extension webinars that look interesting and, um. Okay. Anything else with, uh, zoning changes?
Just a clarification on that table. Does everyone feel that we should change the OSRD minimum lot size for now to a range like two to five to show that we're having a conversation?
I think that'd be good.
Cause I don't want to get people up beyond you. Just get people worked up unnecessarily. That's what I'm trying to do. Okay.
I would propose three to five to, I, I, I think we should still differentiate the OSRD from the gateway. Yeah. Just for the sake of discussion, if, if there's great feedback and people want to see a two, then, then we can still consider that at the hearing, but.
Leave the question mark there.
Yep.
Okay.
It's the easy answer right there. Right to the heart.
We don't want to put five exclamation points. That would be maybe too much.
Now. Thank you. That's helpful.
That's three to five, three to five?
Well, this, we're just going to leave the question mark to be determined on a later date, I think.
All right. All right. So we get to wrap up the discussion on the zoning ordinance for the evening? Okay. Brian, is there any correspondence?
I have some correspondence, Madam Chair. I had a conversation today and I asked him to put it in writing for me because it involves a judgment call, I think, by the board. But I'll let you determine that. As a follow up to our telephone discussion earlier this day, relative to construction of two to a maximum of four cabins, i.e. accessory structures on the referenced lot, and the reference lot is actually Steve's old residence, not our Steve, but the past chair. So it's up on Reservoir Road, about halfway up. Okay, located in the agricultural district. My client would like to present a preliminary or conceptual site plan or work session for August 6, so that question has been answered. We believe this proposal is in good keeping with the vision as stated in Plymouth's master plan. My client is initially proposing to place two cabins roughly around 20 by 30 on each 600 square feet on the property with minimal tree cutting and ground disturbance. The wooden, the post and bean cabins would be built by New Hampshire craftsmen and placed on their own concrete slab. In fact, the first unit they want to place on an existing six inch concrete slab that used to house Steve's greenhouse up there. The units would each have their own winded, solar powered, envirolet composting toilet. Cabins would be connecting to the existing private potable water supply. That's a little bit problematic code wise, but that's my problem, not yours. Parking would be limited to a total of two cars at each cabin. There would be no asphalt driveways constructed as part of the proposal. One of the parking areas would be an expansion of an existing gravel parking area at the end of the existing gravel driveway. The other cabin would have its own separate driveway entrance from Reservoir Road. So basically, that's it. And the question came up, I said, well, this sounds like it has site plan review written all over it. However, it it devolved into the question of primary and secondary uses. There is already an existing single family home on the property. So it would seem to me that this was would be an accessory use to the primary use, which is residential. And it's also very similar in nature, except it's short term. Essentially, what they want to do is to give lodging to people who are up here to go outdoors, not to hang out in a hotel. So you could go to this cabin and you walk around the the swamp area up there behind Binks Hill Road if you wanted to, or go skiing, snowmobiling, or any other outdoor activity from that. So the question I think that I really would need to be answered first is is this a, an accessory use like I thought it would be? Or would that become a primary use? And then, you know, further down, so say it's called a, an accessory use today. If they do build out to the the limit of the number of accessory dwelling units they can put on the lot, does that shift it from the primary to secondary again? You know, those are the triggers I'm looking for.
I'm getting hung up on the word accessory dwell and dwelling unit. Because I thought we could only have one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, accessory use.
Accessory use, okay. All right.
So, yes, and and the difference between the accessory dwelling unit that we have is absolutely long term rental. Whereas these would be lodging cabins, basically a low key motel, if you want to think of it that way.
I think the biggest thing is you can only have one ADU.
Right, but it's, they're not. Okay, I mean, if you want to view these as a, this is why I'm asking the question. So if you're viewing them as ADUs, yes, then they would be restricted to one. If they're looked at, I mean, I I don't know how, and we don't really have any businesses of this type, you know, we have motels and hotels. We have Airbnbs, but we don't have, you know, glamping, if you want to think of it that way. So.
Different than an Airbnb, I mean, the, you know, the the purpose of the the intent of the person visiting is somewhat irrelevant. I mean, if it's a short term rental, it's a short term rental.
Correct.
My my concern is if the use changes, but the structures are there. So if we approve two cabins, it's on 23 acres, looking at the tax card. But then if the next owner decides those are going to be long term rentals or
Right.
all of a sudden you have three homes on a portion of the 23 acres. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but that's the one thing that comes to mind.
Well, it 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 fits with the area requirement. Actually, you know, the area exceeds the the minimum for if one of those or both of them were would have been turned into homes.
Right. You don't need to subdivide because the ownership's the same.
Correct. And, you know, at this point, they aren't, you know, if they don't have a septic system, I don't know how they can introduce running water into the building, first of all. That is a DES rule. You can put a tank on your roof and use that as long as it, you know, you're only using it as gray water. And it's, it, you know, goes to a dry well type of thing. We considered this with a the guy who was going to be putting in the the locks where the last chair is now, this this appeared before the board, and I don't even know if any of you were sitting on the board at the time. But it was a, he wanted to build a shop with an apartment above it without putting in a septic, having a chemical toilet or an envirolet, and introducing, you know, bringing in water to like wash up and cook. So, you know, and that the the board at the time totally understood where that was and and realized that, you know, considering what he was proposing, it was more or less a convenience, not a home. I I don't believe he was going to be living up there full time as part of his proposal either. So, but if if, you know, this might, it might just fail in the fact of that even before it it needs to ask for approval. Because he would have to redesign that whole aspect. If that's the case, then, you know, a septic system would be required. And, you know, it would be probably, you know, a two bedroom, you know, that would serve both of the cabins there now. There is, like you said, Steve, you know, plenty of acreage up here. But, you know, I I didn't want to throw them under the ZBA bus without bouncing it off you guys first, but I think that they may have to look at it as like you're saying, just to protect ourselves. Call it the worst case scenario and plan around that. You know, where the worst case being, you know, if if you wanted to do this in in a normal development, he has the area, there's that stricter against one main, you know, more than one main use on the property. But again, now here we are looking at the new master plan, which is encouraging density closer to town. It's certainly not a high density use with three cabins on 23 acres. But it's it's greater than what is proposed within our ordinance now.
It's interesting. In some ways, it's more complex because the house is there.
Right, exactly.
It was, if it was an undeveloped site and they came in with a site plan and wanted to do a couple of these units and we could see it was a business use.
Yes.
Yeah, it's interesting. I could see, I I appreciate you bringing this to us because these are complex.
Yeah.
What about tourist home? Our use table, and it's also, I can read the definition.
Definition of that.
A building or part thereof, other than a motel or hotel, where sleeping accommodations are provided for transient guests with or without meals and which also owner occupied.
That's interesting.
What's it under?
It's in the definitions of the zoning.
It's a permitted use in the ag zone.
What was the name of it again?
Tourist home.
Tourist home.
Detached, yes.
Which is interesting because it doesn't appear in the table of uses.
Oh, I'm looking at a older version. Where's my? Did we delete it from the table of uses?
I'm wondering if we deleted it as a definition. I remember we were talking about this years ago, and I knew that there was some kind of stuff going on. Let me look into this first.
Yeah, this is a, the 2017 version. We might have deleted it from the table of uses.
It's still in the definitions, though.
Yeah, but it might have been meant to be stricken and it would be an admin error. Let me look into it. I mean, it would have force if it was voted on, no matter what it says in there, but.
It's in the, it's in the table of uses. Tourist homes are.
Where?
Page 16.
Oh, it's in the, okay. Okay.
Permitted in agriculture, VCH, CD, ICV.
I mean, if it is still in the regs, that does provide an opportunity for us to consider, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, even if the definition is confusing with that additional fragment that says.
Okay, which.
Also owner occupied.
Which leads me to the next logical question. Do you think that the way that the definition is written indicates that it has to be within the primary residence?
It says a building or part thereof.
Right.
Okay. And I would say. It asks for it to be owner occupied, and it's not specifying, you know,
property.
Building or part thereof and which is also owner occupied.
Right, but the property could be owner occupied without the building being owner occupied.
Yeah, I mean, we've extended that for our ADUs. You know.
Yeah.
But again, I'm sure glad I brought this to you guys.
We, the previous zoning ordinance I was familiar with had an allowance for home occupations that, you know, would would apply in the situation that that, you know, you know, people with businesses, you know, home based businesses could have, you know, accessory buildings for the business as long as they were incidental to the the primary residential use. And and this would certainly, even if that's not defined in our zoning ordinance, you know, I think in this situation, it's good to consider that, you know, the the primary use is probably going to continue to be residential for the owner and that these these are really, even if they're not accessory dwelling units, they could be in the future, but, you know, I think that if the goal is them for to be something like a tourist home or an Airbnb, you know, I'm not sure that it warrants a site plan.
Well, I think because of the commercial nature of it, it pretty much throws it, you know, under your guys' bus. The other thing is home occupations are limited to 20% of the floor area of the home in our town. So that takes that right off the the table on that one.
Within the, is it limited to within the building?
It says 20% of the area of the home, so in other words, there's no interpretation until somebody interprets it.
Yeah.
I I had a recent one where a guy, you know, somebody who's processing firewood. You know, and but there, you know, the actual equipment would fit in a suitcase. But, you know, your product is, takes up 128 cubic feet per pile, you know. So, you know, is it a home occupation? Well, it kind of is, yes. So, you know, the idea with something like that would be if the, if it didn't violate any of the norse ordinances and the neighbors were in line with it, he would have to screen it. You know, that, so there's a few protections in there, you know, in that regard, but you know, I would really like to give this person, you know, either a clear path to one board or the other. And because, you know, like I said, and Steve said, it is, you know, complex when you start digging into it. I think at the very least, because of the commercial nature, it would require a site plan review. But I don't know if it also needs to go to the ZBA as well.
Sounds like if we could use this tourist home use to come through a site plan, then it could avoid ZBA. But there would be a public hearing process because one of my concerns would be that the neighbors find out about it.
Yes.
So I think you're saying, Brian, is there's a, is a public process for people to be able to chime in?
Yes, yes. I just need to know which board they need to appear in front of. You know, it could be just the planning board, or it would be ZBA and then PB.
Can I, can I ask a question? The way you guys are talking, you know, about what he wants. It seems like years ago, you know, maybe it doesn't make any difference, but remember how they used to have the little cabins? People would come up and stay in these little summer cabins. It was, you know, we had them in town. Well, and then there was something even way before then, and it was just, people would come up in the summer. Sometimes they might have a swimming pool, but but there were these different cabins. And then there was the main house where the people lived. And this was just summer stuff. It wasn't winter, but wouldn't that be kind of the same thing?
Yeah, other than the duration of the stay, which takes it away from that. You know, it, yeah, that was, you know, not only accepted, it was a general use for hotels and motels back in the Route 66 days, I guess, you know, tourist cabins and bugalos versus the motels that we see today.
Right.
The, you know, and the poser on this, of course, is is that it's not located in the gateway zone or, you know, the Tenny Mountain corridor, or even on, you know, an accepted commercial corridor. It's it's like up on Reservoir Road, you know. So, you know, the the intermittency of the use is going to speak a lot to it. The fact that it it's pretty much limited to, like the applicant was talking about, you know, a couple of vehicles extra. But, you know, I, like I said, you know, I mean, I'm willing to go with whatever. I'm just kind of expressing the struggles that I've had with this.
The question is whether or not they come to the planning board with an application for a tourist home.
Right.
Or they go to the VBA for some sort of special exception or variance to the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, because you'd have primary uses on more than one structure on the lot.
If if we don't require sorry, conditional use permit for tourist homes, they don't, they don't need to come to the planning board for approval of a tourist home, do they? I mean, unless that, unless it's a site, well, the site plan review is.
Yes.
Yeah. Because of its commercial nature.
Right, correct.
Yeah.
He started out with two or three small cabins and the people coming up for maybe a long weekend and decided that he needed to add six more cabins. What are the neighbors going to say about how this process all occurred and how he ended up putting basically a motel in the middle of their properties?
Right, I think one of the that the board should put a limit on the number you know, of these. And if they want to to come back, then they they can come back for a new site plan review for cabins, you know, four through 10.
Right.
Yeah.
That would expand the process, Carl, so that.
You know, but yes, and and being very specific in how, you know, the you will compel the phasing of this instead of the other way around.
So if they go to the VBA, they're coming to us anyway?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. So we just need to basically determine if we feel like this conforms enough to the zoning definition and the of tourist home to bypass the VBA.
Correct.
And could that be left up to the applicant? Are they comfortable with that definition? And if not, do they?
Well, I mean, the the idea of the accessory units or accessory use units was kind of a thinly veiled attempt to avoid ZBA. Because, you know, if they, if they have to make a decision about what it is, that would immediately kick it back to you anyway, since you're the arbiters of this. So, you know, that's one of the reasons I've been trying to bring these questions forward before it gets to any other board, just to determine the proper path for it. You know, and if, I wasn't even thinking about tourist home when when I was having the conversation. You know, and it, if, I wasn't even thinking about tourist home when, when I was having the conversation with him. Uh, but if the board feels that that is close enough to what he's asking for, then, you know, that's basically what we need.
But the part of the issue is there's a, there's gonna be a primary residence on the property, and then an accessory use, which is the cabin.
Correct.
Okay, and sorry if these are dumb, but I'm just trying to understand which way to guide this, but um, so there needs to be, where do I find, is it in the zoning ordinance somewhere where we have it determined that is primary use, accessory use?
They don't really speak to primary or secondary uses. They talk about main structures. And that's always been dicey.
Section 409 addresses accessory buildings or use. A building or use subordinate and customarily incidental to the main building or use may be used within where the main building is permitted or granted special exception. Uh, accessory structures may be allowed in the required setback of all zones by special exception by the ZBA. So if, if we're looking at a tourist house as an accessory structure, it would at least need a special exception.
No, that's only if you're violating the setback, Phil.
Is it? Okay, alright, alright, sorry.
Uh, but no, I mean, uh, well, let's see, there, there's actually two things here.
Yeah.
Maybe is where the main building is permitted. Oh, I see. So in other words, they're limiting those uses only to permitted or special exception uses, but no variances are allowed. Where the main building is permitted or granted a special exception. So if the main building had been granted a variance for something, evidently that would rule it out, since they were very specific about this. So we know that residential is a permitted use. We know that the, uh, the placement of the cabins is such that they're well out of the setbacks. So it's, you know, if, that's, you know, an accessory use, I guess.
I think that
It's a tough one.
I think that looking at section 409, that tells me that because there's a residential property, a residence on the property, and there are other structures that are not necessarily subordinate, subordinate, it's not a shed or a ADU or something like that. I think it needs to go to the VBA.
Okay, you think that, that by saying that the, the bunk houses are a it's not incidental to the main structure? Okay, I'm, I'm good with that as well.
What's everyone else think?
Yeah, makes sense.
It, to me, it seems fair, as clear as our zoning ordinance gets, it doesn't really matter what the tourist home, what the definition of those places are. It's the fact that there's gonna be an additional and you can still run those two places without the residence there, so I think it's not subordinate to the residence itself.
Correct, I agree.
Okay.
So, okay, so it's, it's bound to the ZBA under that, because these are not yes, for, um, it's not the defined accessory, uh, structure that we're talking about in the zoning ordinance. Good with that.
It's not, I mean, if they're just to be one, I feel like that's, that's a different story. That becomes an ADU, and I don't think our ADU has anything about the, the length of rental term.
No, none at all. It's, it's limited mostly in owner occupation and square footage.
Yeah, so if there was one, it would be an ADU, and they would need, I mean, they just have to do the conditional use permit and be good. But because there's multiple, and it's almost like there's a residential use and there's a commercial use, not, neither is subordinate to the other. Yeah, that's, that's what it seems like to me.
Okay, so I, I think that what they need is whatever the SE or a V, uh, because of and again, we're, we're talking about language here, the, the zoning speaks to structures and not uses, other than when they're accessory or not. So, uh, but, you know, the use defines the fact that it, that it isn't incidental. So I think it's very relevant to say that the use itself is what is precluding this, given section 409.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I hope that's it, does that mean my brain hurt?
I've done my job, madam chair.
Any other correspondence?
That was it, madam chair.
Alright, can I make a motion? Unless anybody has anything else to say?
I'd say, I'd say please make a motion.
I would, I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Hey, Carl seconded. Alright, my favorite part. The role, Carl.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Mary Ann.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Phil.
No.
I knew it. No.
No, he did that last time.
Yeah.
Rebecca, hi.